Good evening and welcome to the February twentieth meeting of the Berea Board of Education. Roll call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mrs. Michael?
Here.
Mrs. Zurkey?
He's not here today. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we have public participation and we have no one that has signed up to speak this evening. So we'll move on to our Titan Spotlight. This is so exciting. This is why so many of you are here tonight. One of our favorite things to do is to recognize students and their wonderful achievements. So please don't be nervous. None of us bite up here, right? Yeah, we're friendly. We just want to hear from you and learn what you've been up to. That's all. So first, can we have John Music come up? Right over there to that microphone. Can you make sure that's on? Hi, John. Are you a senior this year?
Yeah, I'm a senior.
Wow, you've gotten really tall from like the last time I saw you.
I thought I've always been tall, so.
Trust me, when you wear a grindstone, you won't. So you placed tenth out of a thousand students taking the Microsoft Certification Exam?
Apparently.
You're very humble. I understand that. That's very impressive. Now, did you take this because you had to or because you wanted to?
Just because I had like, you know, open spots.
And is it all online or multiple choice? What kind of test is it?
So like it has you like just, you know, it has like something that it wants you to do on like the certain program and you just do it.
Like Word and Excel and those kinds of things?
Yeah.
I guarantee you'd probably do much, you did a hundred times better than I would. Because I'm what my son calls a boomer. Yeah, you probably don't call your mom that.
Not boomers.
No, I know.
Technically.
Yeah.
I just want that to be properly reflected in the record.
What are your plans for next year?
Don't really know yet.
Okay, and do you really enjoy doing stuff on the computer?
Barely.
Yeah, okay. Is it part of a Polaris class or is it just?
No, it's just one at the school.
Awesome. Did anyone else here take the test with you?
Yeah, I believe there were several other students.
Well, that's very impressive. We're very proud of you and everything that you accomplish and we wish you all the best in the future.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next we have Marcus Thomas and Julia Bales. Marcus and Julia are figure skaters. They represented Berea Mid Park High School in the Ohio High School Team Figure Skating Championships at Thornton Park in Shaker Heights earlier this month. And they were part of a combined high school team called Westshore. Team Westshore came in fourth in the state out of fifteen.
Second.
Second, okay. Awesome. Well, thank you for correcting me. That's amazing. Okay, so how long have you, you can come in and sit down. No, we're casual, no problem. So whoever wants to go first, how long have you been figure skating?
I've been skating since I was in kindergarten, but I've been on and off, but I've stuck with it since like sixth grade.
Okay, how about you, Marcus?
I've been skating since I was like eleven.
Okay, that's kind of late, isn't it, to start a sport like figure skating?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's impressive. So how often do you practice?
I usually practice once a week, maybe twice a week if I have a competition coming up.
I practice the same amount as she does, once a week or twice a week.
And is, where do you practice? In Shaker Heights or?
Brooklyn, Brooklyn Recreation Center.
Oh, okay. So your performances were solo performances?
We did a solo performance and then we also did a group performance with our team.
Oh, is it like synchronized skating?
It's not synchronized. It's just like the theater on ice, basically.
What was the music?
Uh, School of Rock.
Ooh, that's a good one.
Yeah.
So what's, what do you really like about figure skating?
It's just, it's really, it's a unique sport. It's not like your typical football where you just be like, here, have a ball, go. You have to be like, okay, so I have to do this and I do that and then boom, you did it. And there's like, you can do multiple different things. You could do combinations where you do two jumps, the two same jumps, two different jumps, or you can just do whatever, basically.
You're also only good at yourself, kind of in a, in a way.
Yeah.
Always bettering yourself for yourself.
Is the scoring based out of six point oh or is it like that new scoring that they use at the Olympics?
I'm not sure how they base the scoring, but all I know is that it's just based on your skills and like how well you land a jump or set up a jump and everything like that.
Awesome. So Julia, you're a senior?
I am a senior, yes.
What are you planning to do next?
I plan on going to the University of Cincinnati to study the biology of animals.
Preston, do they have figure skating there?
Unfortunately not.
And Marcus, you're a junior?
Yes.
So you still have a little bit of time to think about your future?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody have any question? Well, thank you very much and congratulations. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Now we have some students from the middle school who were essay contest winners. And first we have Christopher Woodford. He was a winner in the Martin Luther King Essay Contest sponsored by the Eastview United Church of Christ in Shaker Heights. Christopher, how, how, what grade are you in?
I'm in seventh grade.
You're in seventh grade, okay.
And before I start, I would like to say, football is a little bit more in-depth than you giving a ball to him. There's also some tackling, running around, throwing too. You do that sometimes?
Did you, did you enter this con, the contest because like school or just because something you wanted to do?
Because something I wanted to do?
Awesome. Would you like to read your essay for us?
Sure. The Poor People's March was a march that started as a demonstration held in Washington DC in nineteen sixty-eight. Participants demanded that the government make a plan to help the employment and housing problems of poor throughout the United States. In November nineteen sixty-seven, civil rights leader Martin Luther King Jr. and the staff of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference met and decided to have a Poor People's March to find solutions to many of the problems of the country's poor population. The march would lead up to the country's capital. The plan for the march was to, was that protesters consid, considering, wait, no. Cons. Consisting of four African Americans, whites, Native Americans, and Hispanic Americans from different urban and rural areas would come together in Washington DC and demonstrate daily from May fourteenth to June twenty-fourth in nineteen sixty-eight. It was hoped that this would persuade Congress and the Federal Executive Branch to take serious and adequate actions on jobs and incomes. The march would culminate a, in a massive march on Washington where demonstrators would demand a twelve billion economic bill of rights, guaranteed employment to those able to work, income to those unable to work, and an end to discrimination in housing. Our success as a nation depends on whether all people have the opportunity to thrive. Economic programs such as food assistance, tax credits, and housing assistance can help provide opportunity to making a short-term poverty and hardship and by doing so, improving children's long-term outcomes. Over the last half-century, these assistance programs have reduced poverty for millions of people, including children who are highly susceptible to poverty's effects. At the same time, barriers to opportunity, including discrimination, racism, and sexism in access to employment, education, and healthcare remain enormous and keep poverty rates much higher for some racial and ethnic groups than others. While the govern, while government programs have done much to narrow the poverty gap, further progress will require stronger government efforts to reduce poverty and discrimination and build opportunity for all disabilities, races, and genders. To eradicate poverty in the United States, we need to raise income rates and lower tax rates for all people. The best way I can overcome my chances of becoming poor is through education. I plan to graduate from high school and earn a degree in addition to coaching youth sports by coaching youth sports and direct, and directly encourage children to focus on their education to end the cycle of poverty.
Thank you, Christopher. That was awesome.
Thank you.
In addition, you play football, you mentioned?
Yes.
Do you play other sports other than football?
Yes, I do wrestling and I'm gonna do track.
Awesome. Good for you. Very good sports. All right, thank you, Christopher. And now we have five more students, middle schoolers, who participated in the Berea Elks Contest and their essay was about what the Bill of Rights means to me. And first we have Ella Gavriluk. Simone Carter. You can come up. Is it Kylie Gabor or Gaber? Is Kylie here? Heaven Vasquez? Isabella Molnar? All right, who would like to go first? All right, Isabella, what grade are you in?
I'm in eighth grade.
Eighth grade, okay. Would you like to read for us?
Of course. The Bill of Rights means a lot, but to me, the Bill of Rights is like a shield. It protects mine and everybody else's freedom as human beings. A really important thing to recognize in the Bill of Rights is the freedom of speech. This means to me, we have the right to talk about our thoughts and feelings without being punished or facing a consequence. Another important thing to recognize is freedom of religion. This means we have the freedom to worship and practice our beliefs. We could also choose not to follow any religion at all. It helps us know that our beliefs are respected, but they are also protected. The right to bear arms is another characteristic of the Bill of Rights. This grants us the ability to protect ourselves, family, and our property. This right ensures our power to defend ourselves and keep a good sense of security. The last right in the Bill of Rights that is equally important is the right to privacy. This Bill of Rights means that our personal information, communications, and activities are protected. In conclusion, the Bill of Rights is like a compass that guides our nation towards freedom, justice, and equality. It ensures that we have the power to express ourself, express ourselves, share our beliefs, protect ourselves, and have respected our privacy. To me, the Bill of Rights represents the insurance of democracy and the power of people. It reminds us that we have a voice and that our rights should be respected and upheld.
Thank you. Ella, what grade are you in, Ella?
Fifth.
Fifth, okay.
The Bill of Rights is one of, is the first ten amendments to the Constitution. It points out America's privilege in relation to the government. It assures civil rights and freedom to the individual. This means to me that we have the privilege to do what we want. It gives our life more memories if we get, if we get to choose what we do in our everyday life. Sometimes we take this advantage for granted and not realize how important it is. It is a great benefit that some people could not get in their life. This is why millions of people immigrated here to give them and their children a better life. My grandparents moved here to give me and my family a better life. To me, the Bill of Rights means that we get, that we can get more independence and greater autonomy. We have more freedom in our days, months, and years thanks to the Bill of Rights. We also have rights in relation to our government. By voting, people are participating in the geometric process. The Bill of Rights has a lot of good consequences to, to our life for men, women, and children. This is what the Bill of Rights means to me.
Simone, what grade are you in, Simone?
Sixth.
Sixth, okay.
What the Bill of Rights means to me. As an American citizen, the Bill of Rights is important to me for many reasons. From the day I was born, the Bill of Rights has protected and allowed me to be who I want to be and believe in what I want to believe in. There are ten amendments to the Bill, there's ten amendments to the Bill of Rights and they are all special in their own way. The First Amendment allows me to express my thoughts without the fear of punishment and it gives me the chance to share ideas and talk about things that are important to me. Having free speech and being able to assemble allows, allows citizens to unite and make changes. It feels great to know that I can be part of a real, of change and in this country, oh gosh, in this country, in that I can feel safe sharing my opinions. Although, although guns might not be safe, the Second Amendment states that citizens have the right to keep and bear arms. Guns may, may be scary at times, but in some situations, they are useful and can protect us. If you are a gun, if you are a gun owner, you have to follow the rules and be responsible with your weapons. In addition to the first two amendments I mentioned, the Bill of Rights lists many other ways to, ways Americans can feel protected. The founding fathers wanted to make sure that Americans were free to practice their own religion of choice, the freedom to say what they think and not worry about the government taking away their rights for no reason. In America, we are lucky to have the Bill of Rights because many other countries do not have the privileges that we have. I will never take these for granted.
And Heaven, what grade are you in?
I'm in sixth grade.
You're in sixth grade, okay.
What the Bill of Rights means to me. To me, the Bill of Rights means everyone can use and enjoy their religion without the fear of the government telling them how and what to believe. The real question is, do you enjoy your religion and the rights that come with that? I know, I, I know that I definitely do. For example, the Bill of Rights means I can be anything I choose to be. Religion is a most definite guaranteed freedom. Everyone should be able to choose for themselves. The Bill of Rights says that they can. With the Bill of Rights, I feel I can chase my dreams, not who my dad wants me to be, just me, who I want to be. I really do feel that I can believe what I want with the Bill of Rights being a standard civilian protocol. That's why I feel the Bill of Rights means I can follow my own path. Also, the Bill of Rights means people shouldn't slash can't judge me for my religion. According to the Bill of Rights, everyone is able to express their religion. Otherwise, we will live under complete control or a dictatorship, being told what to believe and how to live. The Bill of Rights is the cornerstone of our democracy, a testament to the belief that every person has inherent rights that must be protected, says Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Those are my reasons why I know the Bill of Rights means people may not or can't judge me based on my religion. The Bill of Rights means I can love and cherish my religion. The Bill of Rights makes sure I'm happy or at least able to pursue happiness and practice the way I choose. I think the Bill of Rights ensures my happiness by letting my religion be free and now, free from governmental interference.
So before you go, ladies, other than writing, are there other things that you like to do? Hobbies or sports or anything like that?
I'm a cheerleader.
You're a cheerleader here for school? Okay. Awesome.
I like sketching and drawing.
Very impressive young women. We're very proud of you and thank you for sharing your essays with us. And lastly, we have our Spelling Bee winner from the middle school, Elena D'Agostino. So Elena, you're in fifth grade, right?
Yes.
I think, to my knowledge, this is the first time a fifth grader has won the Spelling Bee.
Right? I think so. I, I'm not sure, but I will tell you, she was impressive.
Yeah. So what did you do to prepare for the Spelling Bee?
I practiced when I had like free time with my friends and family.
Did you walk around like with a dictionary?
Um, with a list.
You know what a dictionary is? Okay. I mean, when we were in school, we had like these big, huge, fat books that we had to carry everywhere. We couldn't just carry a paper or on our phone, so you're lucky. So what was your winning word? The last word that you had to spell.
Laundry.
Laundry?
Yeah.
Okay, can you spell it for us?
L, A, U, N, D, R, Y, laundry.
All right, very good. Were there any ones that you thought were a little bit challenging?
I got OkaFenoki and Versailles.
OkaFenoki?
Yeah.
Why don't you ask her to spell it and use your strategy that you used that day during your Spelling Bee? Because you had a very specific strategy you used.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, what am I spelling?
OkaFenoki.
Oh.
And please don't ask me for the language of origin or the part of speech.
O, K, E, F, E, N, O, K, E, E, OkaFenoki.
Okay, and what? Could you see her, could you see her writing? I don't know if you can see behind.
Yes, I was, I was gonna ask her, what was the strategy that you used? Were you writing it on your hand? Do you do that for every word?
Yeah, even the easy ones.
Did you have the Plain Dealer Spelling Bee yet? Do they still do that? Where the winner from the school goes to the?
You, you advanced to another Spelling Bee, right?
Right?
Um, no, I had to take a test and it did not go very well.
That's okay. You did a good job that day. You did a really good job.
I think Mrs. Ferris wants to ask you to spell a word.
Well, my first word of choice was Anamontopia, but that is kind of, I don't even know how to spell. I had to Google it. But this one is probably a little bit easier. Chauffer?
C, H, A, U, F, E, R, R, E? I think I got the last part wrong.
That's okay. It was very close.
Yes, C, H, A, U, F, F, R. But definitely almost there.
That was like spelling one of your favorite things to do?
Um, I like to read a lot, that's why.
Do you do anything else? Like all the other kids, you do sports or other hobbies?
I play soccer year-round and then softball in the summer.
Well, congratulations. That's a really big deal to win the Spelling Bee. Proud of you. Can we have all the students come up to the front just for a quick group picture, please? Stand right up there. Okay, thank you. I like the music during the picture. That was like right on target. Please don't feel like you have to stay in the meeting. You're of course welcome to, but you can go and maybe go get ice cream or something like that. Thank you very much and congratulations to all of you. Okay, next we have building updates from our building principals. Are you going first, Dr. Smithberger? Are you going first, Dr. Smithberger?
Yes, so.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening and talk about our buildings and kind of the awesome things our students are into right now. Uh, Anna, I wish you would've given this speech about not being afraid when you get up here. That would've been helpful maybe to get me going a little bit. I have to go after all these awesome kids and no speech to get me motivated, so maybe next time, just think about it. Uh, so again, thanks for having us here this evening. Uh, we'll take a few minutes of your time. I'm gonna go to present mode here possibly, get it set up. So when we were asked to present kind of a building update of where we were, we decided as a group of principals and worked with Mrs. Wheeler, to talk about Portrait of a Titan and some things we're doing with one of the tenants of Titan, Portrait of a Titan, we picked leadership. So I'll talk about the high school, we'll turn it over to our other building leaders. They'll talk about what's happening in their buildings uh, in relation to the tenant of leadership. Um, so as we get started here, everything we do tries to tie back to Portrait of a Titan. Um, whether it is a, a Tuesday math lesson or an after-school rehearsal for the musical which is going on right now, where it's where John went to. Ask his parents where John goes and he's at the musical, so. So we always want to be building these tenants into what we do and we're excited about that. So tonight we picked leadership. Um, so here are the indicators what a leader is, non-indicators of what it is, a leader is not. And then essential questions are put out by the district. We did not create these like in the last week for our buildings. Uh, this is just where we are. It's what we live with all the time and we're excited about how we accelerate those in each building. Uh, the high school, we put all different areas where kids can have exhibit leadership. There's thirty-some different clubs at the high school. We have twenty-some varsity sports. Uh, we have the interactions in the classroom. We have our music and theater programs. So uh, all said and done, we're about sixty different ways besides a classroom student can show leadership here in this building. So I'm not gonna highlight all sixty tonight. I'll just do fifty-eight. Save two for later. No, actually I'm gonna highlight four this evening I think are really uh, interesting because they're new to us in the last few months. Uh, we're doing some really unique things. So the first one I wanna highlight is Unified Sports. Uh, here are pictures of Unified Sports Team. This is our first year having Unified Sports. Uh, we have basketball and cheerleading right now. In the spring, we will have uh, cornhole and I believe kickball. So we're excited about that opportunity. This has been a couple of years in the making. It started with uh, Trish Kukura and John Adams. Uh, now it's Trish Kukura and Miranda Rola, uh, kinda overseeing it. Uh, it is uh, both uh, students with disabilities, without disabilities. Uh, they participate. Uh, they have uh, multiple games in a day. We hosted last week. Uh, they played, I believe, four games that day. Um, and the students get to interact with uh, each other. They have practices. They talk about teamwork, communication. Uh, we celebrate each other as students. We build friendships, so it's a really great space to show leadership for all the students involved. Uh, it has been an absolute joy to watch them get together. Uh, both the students and the adults. It is, it is fun to watch them grow, uh, both as, as young people and as, as, as members of a team. Um, I'm also, we're gonna report, our team does fairly well. We were three and one last week, yeah, so it's, um, and um, it's just a great experience overall. When they get done, they all eat lunch together, that they, they communicate. And to see the students now interact with other students in the hallways back and forth has been awesome for us. So it gives everyone a chance to be involved, be included, and be leaders. Our next one is peer mediation. Our peer mediation this year got a revamp. Uh, we had not done training in a while. Uh, during COVID, we lost kind of our, our peer mediators because of just social distancing and then graduation. So we needed to kind of get it restarted and go from there. Uh, so we had our first group of trainees in November. Uh, we are gonna have our next group uh, later uh, next month and in April. We'd like to have thirty total peer mentors. Uh, they refer to themselves as helping everyone achieve resolution together. HART is the acronym. The students designed that and came up with their own name. So they were trained uh, by a group uh, called WAVE. It's been around since the uh, eighties. Uh, WAVE stands for Winning Against Violent Uh, Uh, Environment's Curriculum. So it's, it's a well-established curriculum. It's led through our Family Support Specialist Office, Michorco. And they have already been working uh, with students. And recently, uh, this month, they presented a scenario at a staff meeting. And got to show our teachers and adults what they would do in the scenario. So that when they get, our staff recommends someone go to peer mediation, they now know exactly what it looks like because they give us a role play in a scenario. Um, so they're getting out doing stuff and they're excited to be a part of that and, and create a culture of our building that we don't resort to physical violence or verbal violence. There's a better way to solve things and they've been doing that for us. Um, and they were picked because they were, they applied, they were recommended by staff, they were sought out, so we're excited they're there. Uh, and we intentionally did not include any seniors in this group because we want them here next year as we build capacity for our group. So we're hoping by next year, actually by April, to have thirty students trained who can be a part of this. Uh, Rocks, Ruling Our Experiences. This has been the middle school for what, two years Tim? Maybe longer? Three. Uh, our first cohorts at the high school this year. Uh, so we have some returners that have graduated from middle school program to the high school. We have new, a, a new trained group for the high school students. Uh, they're doing awesome stuff with our counselors, uh, who have been trained as well, cause you have to be trained in the Rocks program. Uh, the program focuses on communication, relationships, body image, social, uh, media, stress, pressure, self-defense, college and career, and leadership skills. Uh, this month, they've been focusing on, February is Teen Dating Awareness Month. Uh, unfortunately, uh, teen dating doesn't always lead to great relationships all the time. Sometimes the relationships do become abusive. So they've been working with our announcements to give messaging and support to students who may be in relationships that aren't healthy and give examples of healthy relationships. So they're showing leadership, uh, both being in the group and being mentored, as well as helping our other students around the building. Uh, the final group I wanna mention this evening is the uh, BMHS Leadership Academy. Uh, that is a group that I, I personally am the advisor of. Um, is a chance for me to give back and be near students and work with them. Uh, the students in Leadership Academy go through nine hours of leadership training uh, throughout the fall. And then in the, after that, they have to complete a service project in the community of their choosing and their development. So any student, uh, we send an email to our staff that they think have leadership skills or they're a team, club captain or team captain, club president, or just hey, this kid has leadership skills. Uh, they can go to the training. It's all-inclusive in regards to what we put in. Uh, and the idea behind it is, we tell kids they're leaders, but we don't actually give them any skills to be leaders. We just say, you're in charge of this and you're the captain of the track team because you're the fastest kid on the track team. Which is the coolest trait for track, but not really a great leadership trait that you are really fast. So we try to give you some skills and so they complete multiple projects in the community. Uh, so here's some pictures of the projects. They were at the Jack Frost Festival. Um, the mayor announced last week, based on their efforts of, of that night and some other stuff they did, they raised over twenty-seven thousand dollars for s- the city of Berea to support uh, people in the community who are less fortunate. Uh, we have pictures here at the top. They also, one of the other projects, I should've mentioned, they, they develop their own projects. So they have to develop a project and they have to do it as a group. Another project they did is they went caroling for senior citizens for the holidays. And the last one here on the right, uh, where you can see Mrs. Wheeler talking, she was a, one of the guests last week. Um, not age-appropriate guest, but she was a guest at the Senior Citizens Prom. We hosted a hundred and thirty senior citizens from the city of Berea and surrounding area. In conjunction with uh, RYP and Ms. Malone, um, and the admin intern for the building this year is Melissa Kleem. She's handled these projects mostly for me this year. Um, so we celebrated with, we had about thirty students there to host prom for senior citizens in the community. Uh, just a fun night out. Uh, they had a blast seeing our students interact with the seniors. And how much fun they had, just eating together, dancing together, and enjoying the night was fantastic. Uh, another group where students are taught leadership skills and exhibit them with service projects in the community. So those are three things they've done. We might have one more project in, in the, in the hopper right now. We're trying to get, get off the ground, but that's where we are right now. So those are the, the four we chose to highlight tonight. Um, I'm happy to answer more questions about them or give you more information about the other sixty opportunities we have in the building where kids can get to be involved. So we're really proud of the work uh, our kids and our staff are doing to show leadership and what it means to be a Titan. So thank you for allowing me to be here.
Good evening. You know, as we were standing there, I realized that um, when I was hired, you guys were at a virtual meeting. And so I have, this is my first time formally addressing the board in a year and a half. Um, as I was, as I was reflecting on how to best highlight, I, I feel like we had, we do a really good job at the middle school with our social media presence and our family newsletters. So I wanted to highlight some of the things that maybe aren't represented in some of those different areas. Um, at the middle school, not only is our focus on the Portrait of the Titan competency specifically tonight, like we're talking about leadership. Um, but we also strive to construct a robust middle school uh, programming that aligns with the best practices um, outlined by the Association for Middle Level Education. Two of those attributes that align to leadership and the portrait are empowerment. And that includes building student capacity to take responsibility for their own learning and to contribute positively to the world around them. And equitable, which is described as providing socially just learning opportunities and environments for every student. So our portrait competency of leadership directly aligns to these middle level attributes. Um, encompassing the ideas of goal-setting, visionary thinking, cultivating the empowerment, trust, um, and compassion. So a number of the things that we do at the middle school to build this competency. Um, first, we have fifteen teacher-led clubs and eight school-sponsored athletic teams, uh, many that are represented on the images on the screen. Um, these various groups provide students with diverse opportunities to explore their interests, develop their skills, and take on leadership roles within their respective groups. We empower students to take ownership of their learning by hosting student-led conferences, which are on Tuesday of this week, or Thursday, excuse me. Um, where they reflect on their academic progress, set goals for improvement, and share their achievement with their families. We try, we're striving to build a culture that data is a powerful tool. So students learn to analyze their test scores, um, from OST tests and MAP tests. They set growth goals and they track their progress over time, building a sense of accountability and responsibility for their learning. Our school counseling department organizes bimonthly um, lessons aligned with our superhero PBIS theme this year, so we call these Super Titan Lessons, which they push out to the entire building every other Friday. They focus on skills such as empathy, communication, kindness, and inclusion. Um, and they empower students to make positive contributions to their school and community. All of these lessons are linked on the middle school homepage under the School Counselor tab. We recently introduced the Fifth Grade Inside Out Day, where students engage in trust-building activities while learning to identify and manage their emotions in healthy and constructive ways, promoting a supportive and inclusive school culture. With over ninety girls participating this year, our seventh grade gr- um, Rocks Group, which is Ruling Our Experience, you heard Mark talking about. Uh, they receive mentorship and empowerment training, equipping them with the confidence and skills to navigate adolescence and become leaders. Student Council, Builders Club, and Web Orientation provides formalized leadership training where students learn to assess the needs of their peers, organize events and activities, and provide valuable services to the school community, laying the groundwork for those, those more independent groups that you heard Mark talking about at the high school. Uh, Girls on the Run and Kid Ed Camps build the capacity of students to set goals, work hard, and share their knowledge with others, fostering leadership skills and a sense of responsibility towards their peers and their community. So these are just a few of the highlights and programs um, that might not be in our social media posts or family newsletters, but they certainly are important in helping our students uh, build confidence, become empathetic, and socially conscious leaders. Um, where they're empowered to make a difference in their school and in our communities.
We come as a team. We're the three elementary buildings, so Terry Grimm, Tracy Schneid, and, and Bonnie Kubek. Um, and uh, uh, when we talk about Portrait of a Titan and focusing on leadership, we're talking about your youngest Titans, your littlest Titans. And so we work with those competencies. Uh, all the buildings do morning meetings and those are instilled in those. But specifically with leadership, we just wanted to highlight a few things that we are doing consistently at all the buildings. Um, I wanted to share that we do K, K Kids, so respectively in all, each of our three cities. Uh, we work with our Kiwanis organizations, uh, come in monthly to work with our students. At Grindstone, it's a group of fourth graders, um, traditionally that's, all the perks come at fourth grade, uh, when you're in elementary school. Uh, but monthly activities, we have um, staff supervisors as well as members from Kiwanis focusing mostly on uh, community, uh, how do we service our community? And so you can see this at the holidays, um, some of our students, um, they made wreaths uh, at, at um, at Thanksgiving. They did, again, like table pieces, but also visit um, some of our local nursing homes as well. So the idea of giving to others, they also do blankets. I don't think we've made them yet this year, but that's, that's definitely one of those, the tie blankets. So um, that's a nice opportunity for our students to show leadership. Um, Safety Patrol is another leadership oppor- opportunity for our students at elementary. Um, so leading our students in and out of school in the morning, uh, making sure that they're crossing um, the areas safely under the guidance of, um, we have at our, with our SROs as well as um, staff members out there. Um, I know our Safety Patrol at Grindstone will work with our kindergarten students, making sure that they get from, at the end of the day, get to their buses safely, um, and get on the bus. So it's, it's like a little, like, big kid with a lot of ducks following them. But they, they get there, so it's good. Those are really good opportunities. I'd, I'd like to also add that I think that our elementary students, as you can see at the middle school and high school, as they get older, all those opportunities that they have to be leaders. But it does start at the elementary and just those peer-to-peer interactions that they have with each other, uh, when they're doing cooperative learning activities. That's where they get to step up and, and also show um, some of their leadership uh, qualities and characteristics.
Um, so I'm gonna talk about Peace Path, which is uh, this map right here. Uh, so in each of our buildings, we have students who've been trained in how to do Peace Path. It is a mediation-type program for like minor conflicts. So you're out on the playground and somebody, you know, pushes you and you're upset about that. So each of our buildings have students who've been trained in how to actually walk. The students who are having a conflict through this, they literally will stand on, we have vinyl mats with the Peace Path. And we also have them painted on our playgrounds so that they can see it. And we have adults who help them go through it because sometimes, you know, the kids don't remember all the actual steps. But it's, it's very prescribed and it really helps kids get through some of their minor conflicts. Um, I'm also gonna talk to you about, in each of our buildings, we have school ambassadors. And those students are trained to welcome new students to our schools. So they'll take the new students on tours of the building. They'll introduce them, come to the office, introduce them to the administrators, the office staff. Uh, talk about the teachers that they're gonna have. I heard a couple of them the other day with a new student and the student wanted to know, well, what are our school colors? And so then they were talking about all the things that have to do with just Berea City Schools, which is nice. Um, a lot of times, depending on schedules, they can eat lunch with them, introduce them to other students so that they have someone to play with at recess and just really welcome them into our buildings.
Alright, so I have two more. One is Student Council and Student Council is typically our third and fourth graders. And they do have to write an essay to be a part of Student Council as a leader. Um, and then they are selected through um, the teacher volunteers that run Student Council. And Student Council members reach out to the community. They do different activities such as with Audrey's Outreach or um, with the nursing homes around, but also school community. So they'll do things within the school community to raise awareness of different things. Um, we have a Titan Learning or Loving Closet where it's our TLC closet. So if we need a food drive or any home goods or supplies for students, they will do that activity with the, the peers within their building. So great leadership skills, um, being embedded in those third and fourth graders. And then our Peer Mediation Program, we have students that are selected to work with some of our um, special needs students. And they can do it in multiple different, different capacities. One of it, the ways that they will do it is, we will do a front-loading of encore. So they'll have their, their regular encore with their gen ed students, but we might wanna front-load a lesson in a smaller environment. So these peer models, these peer mediation students will go in to the gym class, do a lesson with the kids so that when they go into their gen ed classroom, they have a peer that they know they can go to for expla- explanations of the rules or a partner, so they feel like they have an awareness of the program or the lesson that's gonna be going on in the encore. Also, they'll go into the classrooms um, in support, but also the neatest thing is having them walk and transition with kids from one space to the other. Um, and just the conversations that they have and watching them build those relationships with their peers is amazing to see. So lots of leadership skills. I would say that we have silent leaders too. Like we're talking a lot about our third and fourth graders, but when you walk through the buildings, you'll see little kindergartners and first graders that just have that known leadership. Sometimes I just say they're just born with that and they're gonna be in education or they're gonna be doing something with these strong leadership roles. Cause they will be talking about what the kids need to do in the hallway or how they need to be able to get from point A to point B. And it may not be a program, but it's things that they see modeled by teachers and adults in the building and they just start doing that. So um, you'll see kids talk about Titan tickets and we're gonna give a Titan ticket and that you need to be doing this rule or this expectation. So there is a lot of leadership in our little ones and just everything that we've shared going to the middle school or high school, like embedding that path for them in the little ones is so important. So come see us. Come see our leadership skills. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, Tammy Clammer from Snow School. So I, we do several different things over at Snow School to um, help build leadership. Just in our daily behavior system, um, on the several levels, on the five levels. Our level four and fives are, become naturally our leaders, our peer models. Um, they get uh, more privileges. We've come over here for the Unified Sports um, team or games to watch. We've come over here to play basketball with the um, athletes. Athletes have come over there. We've come over here to play basketball with the athletes, athletes have come over there, so forth. But the biggest thing that we are most excited about this year is our Titans Treasure Store. Everything about it is student-led, and it's not just the older kids. It's amazing to watch even the younger kids take on leadership roles. So Titans Treasures was created by the students, the name itself, and then it goes with our whole behavior system, where students are earning monopoly money for their behavior throughout the day. The expectation is that they just don't come to school, but they come to school and they're students. And we always talk about, if I came to work and I just sat at my desk and slept all day, I wouldn't get paid very long. And so that same premise, you come to work, you come to school, you have to be a student, and you earn things. And so we opened up this store, but it's all student-run. And when I say that, the students apply through a little application process we did, and then they interview, so their teacher helps them get ready for interviews, they come dressed nicely for the interview. Some of them brought letters of recommendation from their teachers or work samples, and then they work in the store. And they get paid their 25 cents for their 30 minutes of working in the store, and working in the store means going to get the other students, one by one, bringing them down, helping them shop, doing the money. So it's all tied to our math curriculum for all, for our entire building. And then, with the donations, we also have a team of students that write thank-you letters to the different people that donate. So it's a whole system, and the most amazing part to me is, yeah, the kids get excited about the stuff, but more of the kids get excited to work at the store. And we've had one student who, his first week with us, AWOL'd several times, left, ran out of the building, over to BW, because his uncle worked there, and he wanted to take him home. And finally, the teacher said, "We got to give them something to do, something to keep them here." And we said, "If you don't AWOL for one week, we will give you an interview." And he has not AWOL'd ever since, it's been three months, and he lives to work at the store. He could care less about the stuff at it, but lives to help others. So, that's it.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing all of that. I know, I definitely learned a lot, things that I didn't know were going on, which was kind of the purpose in doing this, to share all these amazing things that are going on in our schools with our community. And also, these are real-life skills that they're going to be using throughout their lives, that they're learning, you know, in kindergarten. So thank you. Now we have Dr. Turner giving us a presentation on our Makerspace.
Good evening. Before we go upstairs for the Makerspace tours, I'm going to give a brief overview of what's going on throughout the district with our Makerspaces. Also, we are live-streaming this portion, but then we will just be recording when we're upstairs, and we'll add that to the recording later. So our purpose for our Makerspaces are basically the four Cs, which you probably have heard of, creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. Those are our goals. A very brief definition of Makerspaces, these are places of exploration, they're high and low-tech experiences, they involve all different types of making, they build community, entrepreneurship, collaboration, mentorship. Our Makerspaces encompass everything that we want for our students, so Portrait of a Titan, UDL, Equity and Inclusion, Deeper Learning, Design Thinking, all of those things can be seen in a Makerspace environment. There's soft skills there, there's academic skills. And there's also a progression to our Makerspaces, so you'll see the pictures at the top, right, that's in elementary, they have a Makey Makey, which is circuitry and electricity. We also have it at the middle school, they're learning a little bit more about it, and we also have them at the high school. I did put links in here, you have copies of the presentation. I link some of the Makerspaces in our universities and colleges, pretty much all of our universities and colleges have multimillion-dollar Makerspaces now. So if you look at them. So the high school, we were very fortunate that Tracy and Mike were able to get us in front of the Brea City Club, and they gave us $100,000 for the high school Makerspace. So $50,000 for the first year, 25 for each year after. We were able to have a dedication, it is the Mayor Stanley J. Trupo Makerspace, and we were able to have them in for a dedication. But that helped us buy really big equipment right away, like our laser engravers and our 3D printers. So as I go through, I'm just kind of doing very brief, more of an impression of what's going on, or what you can do in the Makerspace, what our students, what our staff have done in the Makerspaces. So here are some of our high school. Our ten needle embroidery machine is the most popular piece of equipment that we have in the Makerspace. I put this slide up because it's very interesting with sewing, that occupational therapy actually started from needlework, and it was men who were suffering from shell shock after World War I, and they used needlecraft to help them calm down. And there is still research that backs that needlework, and crafting, and knitting, and crocheting, and things like that are stress relievers, they promote mindfulness. There's a couple of our students. The young man in the middle wanted to learn how to crochet, and I happened to be up there, and I was trying to help him, but he was a lefty, and it's really hard to teach him. So he just went on YouTube and figured out how to crochet, and next time I saw him in the hallway, he's like, "Look what I made." So a lot of our students are designing, making their own creations. The young lady with the Dayton shirt, she was talking about how expensive it was to buy a sweatshirt at the colleges, so she made her own little design and brought her own sweatshirt in. This young man created, made his own design, and then ran out and got a bunch of his friends, so they can come and see what he made. Lot of classes use the Makerspace for projects, for choice boards. This was Avid, they were making their banners. The entrepreneur projects, our 3D printers, we have 3D printed many functional items. Mr. Conti's class has worked on some amazing projects, will be in his classroom today. We did end up purchasing two more 3D printers to keep in his classrooms, so they, because they use them so much. And they also have airbrushed some of their 3D-printed items. Mr. Bazinski, we also put two 3D printers in his classroom, because he was using them so much, so they actually created this piece to help a student who had some fine motor skill challenges, so he could be able to use the airbrush. And he also uses it in, with his robotic, with his animatrons. Lot of clubs have used the space. We did end up doing a survey at the end of the year of all the students, staff, using the Makerspace, and let them pick what else, you know, another piece of equipment they wanted, they wanted another embroidery machine. So we got a six needle, which goes back and forth between classrooms. Mrs. Williams, you'll see it in her classroom tonight when we stop in there, so her classes use it quite a bit, learning, she's revamped her curriculum. And the cricket is also very popular. I do want to add that... Helped our students a lot, I'm sorry. We use a badging system, so students and staff who want to learn the equipment are able to be trained, sorry.
Don't apologize. I know Tammy as well, and she's one of the most special people I've ever known.
For those of you who know Brayden, he was badged on our 3D printer, and then we had another district coming in to look at our Makerspaces, so he gave them a tour and showed them how to run the 3D printers. Mrs. Williams has quite a few students badged in her class, usually that's part of her exam. And then Mr. Conti asked us to represent at the art show, which we were very happy. The middle school has just, their Makerspace has taken off so much under Mr. Kuschlack's Those are his thing hands. Students and staff have stayed after school. And then the middle school Makerspace tech classes have started this year. So working with the curriculum department, and over the summer, and with the teachers, we were able to completely revamp their curriculum, so that fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are all learning about Makerspaces and designing. There is a link in there to their portfolio, so they have a lot of their projects, if you want to look at some of the work they're doing. They also have a big entrepreneur program, where a lot of the students use the Makerspace to design and sell their products. Another student working with Mr. Kuschlack. Mr. Kuschlack sent me a video, it's very long, so in the, for the sake of time tonight, I'm just going to show you one part at the very end, but I would encourage you to try to watch the whole thing later.
In one short year, the Makerspace has made its presence felt in the middle school. After the popularity of students coming down here last year, our technology teachers were able to put together an elective over the summer to allow kids to have the Makerspace experience in the regular classroom, which is just outstanding. It continues to be utilized by individual students. More teachers than last year have wanted to use the space for class projects, which is ideally what we want. We want teachers to bring full classes down here to utilize the space to expand upon what they're already doing in the classroom. And of course, all those ideas of what makes a Titan adaptable, communicator, critical thinker, empathetic, innovative, leader, all of these things that Titans are supposed to be, they are happening in this classroom. They're building a foundation for the students to build upon as they go back out into the classroom, and as I said, even further than that in life. And so I'm just very blessed that we're in a district that has a space like this and has advocates for it. Our students are better off for it.
So the beginning of that is his tour of their Makerspace. And then we have our elementary Makerspaces that have also really taken off under the media specialist. They're using animation stations to study vocabulary words, they're seeing what their Makey Makey. We were also honored to receive $9,000 from Kiwanis to buy a 3D printer for Grindstone. And these are some of the items that the Grindstone students recently made with their 3D printer. All of the buildings were very much about equity, so anything that's in one building, say maybe the PTA buys something special for a certain building, and the media specialists really like that. And we have our monthly meeting, so they'll share, so then we'll make sure that we buy it for the other buildings, so all of our students are experiencing the same things in their Makerspaces. David also was able to 3D print some objects, some little squirrels, for their one-book read for Big Creek. And the media specialists usually send out their newsletters, and they'll have pictures, so there's a link in there with their Makerspace activities. They recently voted on their name for their Makerspace at Big Creek, and it is Titan Tinker Town, so the students got to vote on that. Grindstone also had a campaign, and they were voting, they were teaching their students about voting, so they also cast their votes, and theirs is the Friday Fab Lab. And they usually will make buttons for a lot of different events. And Mrs. Brusk has sent me a presentation, so there's a link in there for her full presentation. And again, I just have a portion.
Hi, welcome to Titan Tinker Town. Come on in. Our newest addition to our Maker Room, Titan Tinker Town, is the sewing machine. Thirty-fourth graders have been utilizing this machine, and it is a big hit. We also have a Hue animation station, along with Ozobots, very popular basic coding. We have a Raspberry Pi and Makey Makey. And in the back here, we have a Turbo Challenge game. Another popular activity with the students is the Snap Circus. Many volunteers like to work with the students at this station. We also have many steam-related materials for the students to use. We utilize the whole library on Maker Fridays. So the other materials may include Picasso tiles, Legos, fairy tale stem kits, Eva planks, straws and connectors, and more. And now you're going to be hearing from our Big Creek parents and students. Hi, welcome to Titan Tinker Town.
And here's a quick one with our parents.
My name's Jenna, and I enjoy volunteering for Makerspace. I enjoy doing crafts with the kids, and coming in and seeing all of them, and surprising my son on Fridays.
My name is Ryan Lang, and today is Makers Friday at Big Creek Elementary, and I love teaching and helping everybody with the Snap Circuits, and it makes me very happy to see everybody's eyes and, you know, smiles light up when they learn something new.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Saunders, and I love coming to Maker Fridays, so that I can see my daughter hanging out with her friends in the school atmosphere, where I'm usually not.
I'm Melanie Bushka. Annabelle's mother. We come and enjoy Maker Day. We get to see what the kids are making, get to help them out, be a part of their everyday, well, not even everyday, part of their activities, their Fun Friday activities. Spend a little extra time with my child and help her...
A lot of extra time. And I hope you have a wonderful Friday.
Hi, I like doing the Makerspace for a number of reasons. Today, for instance, we're doing the sewing machine, and what I love about doing this is I get to sit here, and I get to show to kids who've never done this before. And it gives me so much joy to see them get excited about doing something new. So anytime that there's an opportunity here to volunteer, I always take advantage of
My name's...
Couple more pictures from Big Creek. We have also provided equipment and carts for Snow School. There are some of their students working with the Ozobot robots to code. We have had quite a few districts come and visit our Makerspaces at all levels. I actually got an email, the email came today from the one on the right, from Zanesville, asking if they could come to look at our Makerspaces. Bless you. And there's our State of the Schools display. And funding for our Makerspaces, as I said, we have gotten grant money, the technology department, principal's budget, curriculum department, business donors, parents and family, and staff, all donate items. And I have a number of resource links, if you want to look through any of those later. And that concludes my overview, so, thank you.
Before we adjourn, I wanted to give a quick shout-out. Over the weekend, at the middle school, the gymnastics team hosted the districts for Northeast Ohio, which had over 60 schools attending. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the custodians who worked. I was there as a fan, and I can say that these six people were everywhere. The bathrooms were clean, trashcans were emptied, anything that needed to be done, they were there. Kathy Klein, Annette McCurdy, Jen Patterson, Ron Hutchings, Mackenzie Donahue, and Mike Sturba. And then also Deb Summers was there, supervising on behalf of Buildings and Grounds both days. And just, I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work over the weekend. Can we have a motion to adjourn before we go upstairs?
So moved?
Second. Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone who'd like to join us upstairs to see the Makerspace, you're welcome to come. Oh, did you want to? Oh, okay.